Okay.
Well, this time I didn't have to push it, so there was one woman, so if she doesn't know why that may be.
Oh, really?
Because you don't got the tools.
Oh, you sure?
Yeah.
Can I go?
The court's warm.
I'm leaving at six thirty tomorrow afternoon, and I'm back at six o'clock thirty.
So that's a court.
Dennis, would you like to lead us in a brief prayer?
Okay. Dear heaven and father, we thank you, Lord, for tonight. We thank you, Lord, for all your blessings, Lord, and, Lord, we ask you, uh, help our councilmen, help our mayor, Lord, as they proceed in business tonight, and, Lord, open the minds and the hearts of each and every one and, and everybody that's here, Lord, that your will would be done, Lord, in Jesus' blessed name. Amen.
Amen. Council meeting in order. Will everybody please stay standing for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome all of our friends and neighbors and colleagues in joining us for this regularly scheduled March twentieth, twenty twenty-three council meeting. As you come in tonight, there'll be a desk, which would be to my right, to your left. Through those first two doors you walk through, if you're a guest with us tonight, please sign in. City Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Morrissey.
Here.
Palladino.
Pratt.
Here.
Sharp.
Here.
Sova.
Present.
Stuccio.
Here.
Veer.
Here.
Wolfram.
Here.
Mayor Stockford.
Here.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Katie. Uh, I did receive correspondence from Councilman Palladino. He is feverish tonight, so he is staying home. We'll move on to approval of agenda. Does any member of council or city manager have any changes they'd like to see made to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So, who?
Support.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Sharp.
No.
Veer.
Councilman Veer. Sorry, guys. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We've got an agenda. We'll move on to public comment on agenda items only. During this time, the podium will be open. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please limit your trips to one to the podium. And please, if you're speaking on anything during this particular public comment period, make sure it's got a direct tie, so somebody present on our agenda tonight. The podium's now open.
I'll speak on the letter submitted to the council, Ted Jansen, Ward One. Uh, the letter is in reference to the Incompatible Public Offices Act, and I believe that Mr. Palladino is in violation of that act as being a council member and also a member of the library board. Uh, there was a ironically opinion from Frank Kelly back in nineteen ninety-five and reference to City Hillsdale, City Hillsdale Council. The position is a Hillsdale City Council member and member of the city's Board of Public Works, which may not be BPU, are incompatible, and may not be held simultaneously by the same person. That question was put by, at that time, uh, state representative Mike Knight. And basically what he said, if the act reads, section two, Pub Act nineteen seventy-eight, P H five six six, attorney provides, provides public officers or employees whom simultaneously holding two or more incompatible offices. An incompatible office is defined in section fifteen, one eighty-one, subsection C, subsection triple I, that a public office is described as a department or board, et cetera, et cetera. Being a library board falls under a public office. Incompatible offices means public offices held by a public official, Councilman Palladino. When the official is performing duties of any of the public offices held by that official, results in any of the following with respect to offices held. A one, subordination of one public office to another. The library is subordinate to the city council. Therefore, it's also subordinate to Mr. Palladino. It goes on to say, based on, you can't. Clearly, under these circumstances going reference to the nineteen ninety-five opinion, the office of member of the Board of Public Works is subordinate and supervised by the office of member of the city council. You can just put in the library board in the library. Councilperson approves the appointment of board members, may approve or reject recommendations of the board, approves the board's budget and expenditures, reviews the annual audit of the board. Given these facts, the positions are incompatible under section one B I N I I, under nineteen seventy-eight Pub Act five six six. Goes on some other citations. Abstaining for any members who are in the council involving the Board of Public Works will not allow the person to question, tell, hold both positions since abstention is itself a breach of duty and contempt. Basically, the Attorney General's office says, you can't have two offices. You can't be on the city council, or you can't be on BPU, as a member, and you can't be on the library board. So I don't know why you don't address this issue, or is it going to be the attitude, well, it's just waiting until the Attorney General comes and knocks on your door and says, you can't do this. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Any more public comment?
Dennis Swain, Scott, it was, uh, been a while since I've been up here. Uh, one of the things I want to talk about is Comcast's letter. You know, it, it raises a dollar for, you know, HBO and HBO Max, but how many dollars have they been raising every year and after that, and every year after that, and every year after that? When, how much are we as citizens of Hillsdale? We pay our taxes, we pay, pay our Comcast bills and stuff that we have, but, you know, we need to go back as a, a city and stuff and start looking into a, and providing cable for our people here in Hillsdale. Why do we need to keep giving out millions and millions of dollars a year to a company that they don't care whether you live or die? You know, they were here, we care about one another. And I think we need to come up with something that will in turn, uh, give back to the public and since we got more and more elderly people coming in, into existence here, you know, how much more do they take every time they get a raise? If you live in one of these hous- housing areas, they raise your rent. If you get a, if you get an increase in your pay, everything else wants to go up. Comcast, same way, but they don't go just a little bit, but they did this time, but sometimes they go up higher. I mean, the average, I don't know if you guys have Comcast or not, or if you have time to watch, but, uh, I'm supposed to be on one of the smaller, lower ends, and mine's about two hundred dollars a month. Now, uh, you know, I can't keep on paying that. I have to cut back on other things, but, you know, it's something that we need to look into, and this has been brought up year after year, and I know I've brought it up a few times, but this is getting a little ridiculous, uh, keep having to pay out a dollar here, a dollar there, twenty here, fifty here, you know, to a company that don't even give a care about us or, or our talent. All they care about is what money they make. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Any more public comment?
Um, happy first day of spring to everybody. Um, my name is Tim Fortes, and I live in Ward Three. Mayor Stockford and council members. I'm here to support Ted Jansen's request that Josh Palladino resign from the library board. If that is declined, I ask that, I ask too that the mayor and the council consider removing him from the library board. I concur with Mr. Jansen. There is a conflict of interest with Mr. Palladino on the board, and based on Mr. Palladino's statements in the past, he is incapable of fulfilling his sworn duties as a library trustee. Last October, while campaigning for a seat on city council, Mr. Palladino addressed a forum of the America First Hillsdale Republicans. While talking to the crowd for about an hour, he made at least four distinct statements that exemplified that he does not care if the library stays open. When discussing federal and state government requirements imposed on the library, he said, quote, "We don't need to have a library at all if we don't want to. We don't need to have any books if we don't want to." Shortly after that, while talking about how the library is funded, he suggested putting a proposal on the ballot to defund the library and the one mill that the library receives, the one mill that was approved by voters years ago. While discussing the poor quality of our city water supply, he said, quote, "You can get rid of the library entirely, and you can take that one mill and say, we want one mill to go towards upgrading to the best water filter system in the country." Later, later in the forum, while discussing raising taxes and the twenty-mill cap on taxes, he say, he states, quote, stated, quote, "If there was a proposal to say, you know, I, I, one mill to replace the library, I would probably vote yes." At times, it sounded like a diatribe against the library, and he was literally inciting the crowd to get rid of the library. As an individual and as a candidate for city council at the time, I believe Mr. Palladino was entitled to these opinions and also to promote them. They are ideas and solutions, however, that convey that it cannot be trusted to make unbiased decisions to keep the library open, which is a clear conflict, conflict of interest as a library trustee, and that he is not fulfilling his sworn duties as a trustee. Furthermore, I would like to point out that because he was campaigning for city council at the time, he uses his position on the library board to further his own personal gain, that of becoming a city council member. Still another example of why there's a conflict of interest with him on the board, library board. I've heard several times in arguments of support from Mr. Palladino that he's a good man. I ask you to put aside any religious or political differences for a moment. Even good people do bad things. Whether that person is good or bad, they must be held accountable for their actions. And in this instance, the justified outcome is for Mr. Palladino to resign or be removed from the library board. Thank you for listening and providing me this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Tim. Any more public comment regarding agenda items? Seeing none, we will close the podium, and we will move on to consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we've got approval of bills, city and BPU claims of March second, payroll of March second, city council minutes of March sixth, finance committee minutes of March sixth, BPU minutes of February fourteenth, the ratification of signatures for pop and grub agreements, Hillsdale County Farmers Market Street Closure Agreements, and W W T P North R A S pump. Any questions or discussion regarding items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So, who?
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt. May please have a roll call, City Clerk?
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Sova?
Yeah.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Veer?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Stockford?
Yes.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
State Senator Holt.
Thank you, Katie. We will move on in the packets to communications petitions. Let me get caught up here. First one's Comcast pattern, Comcast letter, blah, 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 Moore raises HBO Max. Second one is Kiefer House Construction Quarterly Update. Is there anybody from CL here tonight?
Of course not.
Okay, well, it's to update the city on the construction status of the Kiefer House Hotel. Um, they're working, doing some excavation. Last I talked to these gentlemen, they were hoping by late April to have a pretty good amount of construction going on there. David, do you know anything additional that should be added?
No, that sounds inaccurate, Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Veer.
Just kind of just backtrack a little bit. Council, uh, council, the, on the Comcast letter, and we always give these up charges, like on a monthly basis, so is the city currently, uh, have Comcast as their internet's provider?
Um, you, there's multiple inter- internet providers in the city, but you mean the city as an institution, like?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, like, what's the relationship with Comcast as far as, as a possible customer?
Do you mean the city as city hall?
City hall or the BPU, just the city entities.
I'm pretty sure we use Comcast. Who do we use, Dave?
No, we, we have Merit, um, so our, our, um, internet is provided through Merit, uh, and that's fiber. It, it's allowed for, provided for educational institutions, governments, those type of things.
Now, a while back, wasn't the city putting in a high-fiber optic thing that was?
Fiber.
Uh, fiber optic line that was going to actually be available to some people in Hillsdale, and what's the progress on that?
So that is ACD, and they were putting it in fiber, um, and it's most, right now, it's at, and they're doing it in phases, but that is primarily in the southwest area of town, um, that, that's gone in first. I don't know the specific, uh, parameters of it, but it was a, a phased-in process.
Because I can actually recall when the, when the city contracted with this company, right? Because, I mean, as far as the approval of the putting in that, this goes years back that they were going to have that up and running and be available, because I have it in my book somewhere, like it's, I'm talking like eight years ago.
I'm correct.
Okay.
Yep, you're right.
Um, and what would you say is the biggest reason why the delay in getting more in the city, the ability to possibly tap into this and get away from the Comcast usury fees that they're charging?
Um, so ACD is, is a relatively small kind of state, um, business, so it's a, it's a smaller business, so it's a capital thing. Um, but putting fiber in is pretty, uh, very heavy upfront with capital costs. So they, what they do is they phase it in, where they put, put some in, they try to get customers, and then they expand that as they go. Um, it has taken longer than I think the city and ACD have thought, and that's what's prompted some of the discussion about the city doing it. Uh, like, you know, City of Coldwater does it, and provides internet to their residents, um, through fiber as well, but, um, but that, that's the only reason it hasn't gone any further is just strictly a cost and, and, uh, you know, supply and demand.
And then currently, what's the horizon as far as time, timeline on when they think they might have the total Hillsdale area covered?
Uh, I'd have to inquire about that, Councilman, I don't know, but I'll, I'll, I'll make a note of that, and I'll reach out to them and report back to the next meeting.
Councilman Morrissey?
Uh, Mr. Thompson, could you comment on whether?
Oh, hold on, we haven't got to the letter yet, we're still on item B. Sorry, Will. Any more questions about either of these? Councilman Sova?
Just like to speak to, um, um, service providers for figure content, like, that compete with Xfinity. There's many, um, online opportunities that are indirect competition, and you can shop around, like, uh, YouTube TV starts at sixty-four ninety-nine a month, I think, so.
It was seventy.
Oh, is it? So I don't know, I don't, I don't subscribe, but I'm just saying, there is others, and as I understand it, Comcast won the, years and years ago, the ability to lay their, their coax cable for their, their television subscriptions, which then now has been exploited to provide them as well, um, years ago, and the way the laws are written, you, you can't really come in and compete right now. So ACD came in with fiber with a newer, higher-speed option, but as has been discussed already, the cost overruns. As I understand it with ACD, they had some severe overruns in Ann Arbor and East Lansing, which caused them to delay coming down here. But they are going, I, I did receive a, uh, correspondence from them, and I was trying to locate it just now, but I couldn't find it, about where they're offering their fiber here in direct competition to, um, Xfinity, and so that's a good move for the city, because competition will help to do what you're suggesting, Dennis, and reduce the prices.
Thank you for your professional insight, Councilman Sova. Any more? Okay, item C, letter from Ted Jansen, Councilman Morrissey, I'm sorry.
Mr. Thompson, could you comment on whether this is an incompatibility or so on? Well, let's start with one thing. So, an Attorney General's opinion is just that. It's an opinion. So, members of the legislature can ask the Attorney General to give them their legal opinion on any issue that they might bring in front of them, and in this case, it had to do with incompatibility of serving on the Hillsdale BPU and on the Hillsdale State Council at the same time. But it's only an opinion, it's not a court decision. It does carry a little bit of weight in terms of the way a court might look at something, so you can cite Attorney General opinions as suggestive of the way that a court might want to decide something, but they're not binding on any of them. It is just that it's legal opinion, the same way that the city might ask our office to give an opinion on something. Um, and second of all, the Attorney General's office won't come knocking on your door. If there are incompatibilities in office, a private citizen can challenge that, um, but it's not something that the Attorney General's office enforces. As to whether or not Mr. Palladino's serving on the library board and the city council at the same time is a violation of the Incompatible Offices Act, in my opinion, it's not, and the reason for that is because there is a separate state statute that governs city, village, and township libraries. That act was passed in eighteen seventy-seven, the Incompatible Offices Act was passed in nineteen seventy-eight. The act that allows cities to establish public libraries has a provision that says the city, or excuse me, uh, if a city council decides to establish and maintain a public library and reading room under this act, the mayor of that city shall, with the approval of the city council, appoint the governing board of five members for the library and reading room, chosen from the citizens at large, with reference to their fitness for that office, not more than one member of the city council may be a member of the board at any one time. So there is a statute that allows a member of the city council to serve on the library board. We have an ordinance in the city that mirrors that, except for it contains a provision that also indicates that one of the members should be someone from B P Hillsdale Public School Board of Education. Um, but given that there's a statute where the legislature says that, in effect, those aren't incompatible offices, you can have a member of the city council, but only one, serve on the library board as well as serve on the city council. Um, the Incompatible Offices Act would have had to repeal that section, or a separate statute would have been passed to repeal that, and since the legislature certainly knows how to include that kind of language in an act, in my opinion, that statute still stands, um, and you can still have a member of the city council serve on the library.
Thank you, Tom.
Yep.
Uh, I mean, we've got council representatives on planning commission, we've got council representatives on KIFA, airport advisories, zoning board of appeals.
So if you look at the Incompatible Offices Act, there is the provision that says you can't serve in a compatible office. The next provision, which I think is in your packet, has a whole laundry list of exceptions, um, which include things like planning commission, which includes a KIFA board, which includes a D B A, all of those types of things, because those are the types of entities where the city might want to have somebody on it just so they know and understand what's going on, because they are in effect created in, to some degree, under the authority of the city. So there is a whole host just within that act of specific exemptions, including things that allow, um, for cities, municipalities with less than forty thousand people to do all sorts of things that bigger cities couldn't do in terms of allowing people to serve in multiple, um, multiple functions, multiple offices, including also being employed in certain capacities and serving on a public board for the, that municipality. So, there's a whole host of exceptions.
Thank you, Tom. Any more questions for Tom or discussion regarding this item? Thank you. Okay, I've got no introduction, adoption of ordinances, public hearing, no old business, so we'll move into new business. Item number, item letter A, Domestic Harmony Contract. And do we have somebody from Domestic Harmony here tonight?
Hello.
Hello.
Excuse me. Um, well, many of you are familiar, so I'm Hannah Jordan, uh, medic service executive director at Domestic Harmony. We are in our forty-third year of providing, uh, emergency services to those victimized by domestic violence. Uh, we have a temporary emergency shelter, twenty-four-hour crisis hotline, individual and group supportive counseling, a legal, legal advocacy, and a prevention education program. In the last fiscal year, we provided shelter to twenty-eight adults and twenty-seven children. We took five hundred crisis and intervention calls. We provided supportive counseling for a hundred and three adults, and our legal advocate assisted with fifty-nine personal protection orders. Um, of the two hundred and sixty-two students that took surveys last year during the prevention education program, uh, thirty-four point two percent of them, uh, has witnessed domestic violence in their homes, fifty point five percent of them have witnessed, uh, teen dating violence, and twenty point nine percent have been victims of domestic, uh, or, excuse me, of teen dating violence. Um, we, um, just to highlight a couple more things that we've done in the past year, uh, we have a rental assistance program. Uh, we started that last year, and a total throughout the year, we helped six families since, just since October of this year, we've helped another six families, and that helps with, um, startup costs, we may be, um, paying, we've paid BPU startup costs to get into an apartment, or repay their, uh, security deposit, first month's rent, something of those, uh, lines we have done. Uh, we helped coordinate, uh, Christmas gifts for twenty-five families, uh, that included seventy children, and I'd like to thank Mr. Mackey, he, uh, allowed the BPU crew to kind of help be Santa's helper this year, and they took their trucks and gathered all of the collections, um, when we were collecting presents, and that was a huge help, so thank you. Um, we are a five oh one C three in good standing, and our funding comes from various sources, uh, um, including, uh, local grants, service contracts, um, state and federal funding, and then we fundraised the rest. Um, so in order to continue the work that we've done for the last forty-three years in Hillsdale County, um, I am asking you to vote in favor of, um, a contract of six thousand dollars. Uh, you've been a strong supporter for many years now, so, um, I ask you to continue that support, and just for clarification too, this isn't a donation to Domestic Harmony, this is a purchase of services, uh, for the constituents of the city of Hillsdale. And then, entertaining any questions if anybody asks me?
Thank you, Hannah. Any questions for Hannah? Councilman Sova? Councilman Soha?
Could you define those services that we're purchasing, just so we can be reminded?
Yeah. So it would be the temporary emergency shelter, so help support or shelter, the twenty-four hour crisis hotline, individual group supportive counseling, legal advocacy program, and prevention education program.
And as I understand it, it's been a big help to both our police department and the sheriff's office when they had calls to be able to utilize your services.
I think so, and I think Chief Hefner would agree.
I do. If that's a service we cannot provide and to have them do what they do in their professional area frees us up to complete if it's crime related or anything like that without having to worry or go back. They can, it's a handoff. They could simply handle everything on that end.
Thank you, Councilman Soha.
Just to add, I know the sheriff's, the jail or county jail is full, but I do know that they will accept incoming people that have been arrested. And one of the reasons they will accept incoming people is specifically for domestic violence. And so as I was in favor previously, I still am. And I thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Councilman Sharp?
You ever had tour of the place?
I have.
Okay, I just want to be sure because everybody but Josh, I think, have taken tours for it. And Gary hasn't seen yet, have you?
Domestic Harmony?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we've been contributing to Domestic Harmony for a long.
Okay.
We've been contributing to less Domestic Harmony for a long time.
Okay, so I want to be sure everybody, because it's something, it's a devil's advocate. We have to have it, but we do have to have it because of the way the world is. And I wish we didn't.
What if you got out of your job?
It's a safe name. It's a safe name.
Thank you, Councilman Sharp. Any more questions? Discussion? Thank you so much, Hannah.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion to approve the contract for six thousand dollars with Domestic Harmony.
Second. All of them.
Motion on the floor for Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt. May I have a roll call?
Councilperson Sharp?
Oh, yeah.
Soha?
Yes.
Sutcho?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Stocker?
Yes.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
And Pratt?
Yes.
Eight zero approved.
Thank you, Katie, and thank you again, Hannah. Okay, we'll move on to item letter B, new business bid award, city hall painting. Jason?
Good evening. With the assistance of City Agent Kristen Bauer, we requested bids for drywall repairs and painting throughout the whole city hall. Or I'm sorry, first floor of city hall. This work is to complete the work that we did starting in two thousand and nineteen with the exterior of the building. We moved into the third floor and the second floor. This should complete all three floors and with the chiller that was approved of last year. And we should be here within the next couple of weeks. After looking through references, we'd like to go, the city staff recommends going for low bidder for eighteen thousand one thirty-eight to RNC Paint Systems out of Troy this year.
Any questions for Jason? Councilman Beer?
As far as that bid, does the city recommend our, as far as the type of paint materials that are used?
Yes, yes. Everything we use, it'll be a match from the third floor and the second floor paint we've already done.
So that's basically what the city has used before?
Correct.
Do you know what paint that is?
I do not, sir. I can, I can get it, it's out of the basement. So next, next time we're up here, I can give you that information.
Well, the reason why I ask is there's, that's a big difference between the two quotes. And I'm just wondering if, but if you're step, 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 or stipifying the the type of paint that has to be used, then.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep. Going through both of their references, they're both about the same size of companies. I do believe that Interstate Painting was a little bigger, but RNC, RNC Paintings, they've been around for about twenty years and they're doing, currently right now, they have crews doing two, three hundred thousand dollar jobs all through Michigan, all through. So their references came back very good as well.
Councilman Sharp?
Just noticeable the twenty-one thousand dollars difference is, this stands out, but.
Absolutely.
But if you feel comfortable with them, I mean, you've done your homework, right?
Absolutely.
So that's what matters.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any more questions for Jason? Councilman Soha?
Was this the job that Mr. Gilder was inquiring about?
Yeah.
Is that possible to give them the opportunity to provide the paint, the oil, the shot with?
Then we just give the spec. It'd be up to the contractor where to purchase it. We can obviously ask him to go local, but it would be price for him as well, wherever he can get his price at for the best price.
Well, you would on my behalf ask him to go local, but if you can, I understand.
Absolutely.
Any more questions for Jason? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, sir. Yep.
He's not going anywhere.
Entertained a motion to award a bid to RNC Paint Systems in the amount of eighteen thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
So I'm going to support.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Beer, seconded by Councilman Sharp. May I have a roll call?
Councilmember Soha?
Yes.
Sutcho?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Stocker?
Yes.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
And Sharp?
Yes.
It's eight zero approved.
Thank you, Katie. We'll move on to item letter C, new business truck purchase. DPS and water sewer departments. Jason?
So working with BPU, we're both in need of some replacement vehicles for our engine fleet. Obviously, we were here last year with the same kind of scenario we've been having. Availability, availability was the key issue I was already had. Now, we did find some interesting, as you see through the agenda summary, the delivery times were kind of all over the place. So with the local bid, it was kind of the, what was the best for both departments? And Hillsdale GMC just still had the low bid, forty-one thousand nine eighty-one. The ten to, ten to twelve week window was, would work for both departments. So that being said, Dave, do you have anything you want to add for your, on the BPU trucks here?
Sure. Thank you, Jason. As, as Jason had indicated, so we looked at my deal pricing, which is the Todd Wenzel Buick GMC. At the time, and I believe they still currently have, they had two vehicle, identical vehicles sitting on the lot. As we spoke about it previously, when we were looking at the dump trucks, we committed to taking, you know, presenting to local dealerships to see how they could do on pricing and availability. That being said, we did, we took it to all the four dealerships in town. And as Jason said, the availability was kind of all over the map. But Hillsdale GMC actually provided the low price with a potential delivery date of something that we could live with. So the Hillsdale BPU board wanted to give them a shot because we had not used them before as low bidder. So we, so they, they voted in favor of the Hillsdale GMC. And after speaking to Jason, and he's been talking to Hillsdale GMC, we're hopeful that they can get the vehicle. But with the changing in the manufacturing process amongst all the dealerships, it's very difficult to actually get or find something and get it because of their run, their production runs are only certain times and just their, their different nuances. As you can see, all the Chevy and GMC, they have different dates, all three of them, that were providing GMC trucks. So we'll see how Hillsdale GMC does. We were very favorable in the price, but delivery will be key. So that's what it kind of boils down to. It's kind of a different, and I think this is what the chief is going to talk about with the police cruiser. It's a very different market out there for fleet vehicles. You gotta catch the run, you gotta get an order in. And if not, then you hope you can find one. And so that's what we're dealing with, this kind of a change in marketplace per se. But, but we, we hope that Hillsdale GMC will, you know, be able to come through on this.
Okay. Worth a chance, I guess. Councilman Wolfram?
I was just curious, did they, did everyone get the request at the same time that is all the vendors?
Yes, sir, everybody went out for the same, we got them the same day.
Councilman Beer?
Jason, what was the budget of the amount for those trucks?
So the budget amount we had for our vehicle was close, was thirty-nine five. And I don't know where public utilities had.
Water and sewer department, they split the vehicle and they had between them sixty thousand dollars. So it's well.
Within the budget.
Underneath the budget amount.
Very good. Any more questions? Councilman Soha?
Thank you for giving these to the local dealerships.
Absolutely.
I was told by one of our dealership owners that the city used to send out the letters two weeks in advance. And this one was a little, they felt a little bit rushed by it. But then they said, but we do what we have to do, so.
Sure. The one issue that was, I'm here if I may, is we're kind of through this, I must say rushed it, but definitely the Todd Wenzel Buick GMC, they had actually the two vehicles on the lot, the fleet vehicles that we need to spec right down. So that's why it went out the way it kind of did. Those fleet vehicles are only going to be held till this Friday. So that's why it went out, like I said, not so fast, but definitely quicker than usual.
So, so just for clarification, if Hillsdale GMC can't do this, then can we fall back on the Todd Wenzel Buick GMCs? Or do you expect they would be gone by then?
They're going to be gone by then, yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Councilman Soha?
What, what are the restraints? I didn't notice that.
So the constraints could be, the way it's described to me is third party parts, brake pads, rotors, et cetera, like that for the, that truck model. When I was explaining to it, it's every day, they can get on and see what is backlog and back ordered. So we'll know a good timetable of, of where our parts are just as you see, they start piling backward, it could pile backwards as the parts pile up. So that's what it is now. Brake rotors. The one thing that most of them did say to me is pending the options, you know, for instance, ADIS fresh screen radio, we don't need that when we're using it, for example. If our spec called for that, they can always send it through with something different and go back later and get it outfitted with the spec that we need, just to try and push these trucks to the assembly line. So that's what those constraints are. Stuff they hold up production.
So just so I understand completely, the constraints are going to make it take up to ten to twelve weeks?
It could go even over.
It could go over.
Yes, sir. Kind of know what the third party vendors are.
Okay.
And then that is why we actually, to the BPU board, had recommended actually the Todd Wenzel Buick quote is because they had two of them sitting on the lot, so burden hands were two in the bush. But they felt strongly about trying to use a local dealership. So they recommended the low bidder.
Well, I mean, we, it's our policy that we want to try to use local people, absolutely. But I can't say that.
Yeah, the three percent figure.
Can't say that hasn't come back to bite us in the butt for.
Right.
As well, because we all know that it has. So hopefully, you know, we'll go off of the goodwill of the Board of Public Utilities Board and hopefully, you know, have faith in. Councilman Soha?
Forgive the continued questions. I noticed a big truck on the Hillsdale Chrysler Dodge Jeep brand box. White one, looks like a dump truck or something. Is that something that is?
I'm not familiar with that truck. I don't know what size that is, but I can definitely look into it.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
There was also this extended warranty, fifteen hundred dollars. Would be additional if we purchased that?
Correct. Those are additional, correct.
Do we, as a city, purchase when we do that?
I, I don't, I personally probably wouldn't do it on this vehicle. It's already going to come with a standard warranty, five, you know, five year excellent amount of warranty. Now, if it was a fleet vehicle, F five fifty dump truck, I, I would on that because that's going to be used more in the more harsher atmosphere, if you will. But on this vehicle, I would not.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Soha. Are we all satisfied?
Yep.
Okay, I move to, go ahead, set this request to purchase from Hillsdale Buick GMC.
Second.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Sharp to award to the low bidder Hillsdale Buick GMC for forty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars each. Can I have a roll call vote, city clerk?
Councilmember Sutcho?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Stocker?
Yes.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
And Soha?
Yes.
Eight zero approved.
Thank you, Katie, and thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on in the packet to item letter D. Under new business, R, S, and H, new terminal design agreement. Dave, I noticed Ginger's here too.
Ginger, you want to take this? Well, this is for an agreement. Our design specialists are working on the design phase of the new terminal.
Thank you.
Because the money, the federal funding money won't be transferred and funds will be available to Hillsdale until the end of May. They wanted to start on this right away because FAA wants bids in hand by July first. So they are, have a very small crunch time. So what we're just agreeing is that, yeah, we can pay for any invoices until we get the money, which will be the end of May.
Also, just to add, of the cost of this, we're only responsible for, I believe, two and a half percent of the total cost, which is about seventy-four hundred dollars altogether, so.
And these invoices, he said, would be fluid. We, we might only get one or maybe two before we get the funding all set. So it's a good problem to have that we, it's going so quickly. We really were surprised that it was going to go this fast.
Yeah, they do anticipate, or I think the FAA wants to see this under construction this fall.
Correct, yeah.
And Ginger has been getting some local inquiries from some contractors on it, so.
There should be plenty of local contractors that are capable of doing the terminal.
Yeah.
Very good. Are you excited, Ginger?
I'm so excited.
It's pretty cool.
It's pretty, yes.
I agree.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ginger. Okay, entertained a motion to approve R, S, and H Airport Terminal Design Contract and authorize the city manager and airport manager to approve the contract on the city's behalf.
So, second.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Wolfram. Can I have a roll call vote, city clerk?
Councilmember Beer?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Stocker?
Yes.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
And Sutcho?
Yes.
Eight zero approved.
Thank you, Katie. We'll move on in the packet. Let me just get caught up here through. Okay. It sure is. Okay, we're moving into item number E. Letter E, excuse me. One of these days, guys, I'll get through a whole meeting.
One forty-five?
Oh, Jesus.
Culver replacement CBS request is item letter E. Is Sam here?
He's not, but I'll take it.
Okay, go ahead.
It's another city business. So, and some of you might be in favor of this, some of you may not be given the actual requests of it. But, so what this is, is we were reached out to by Senator Gary Peters' office. They're collecting requests, various requests, various types of projects that would be potentially looked at for a earmark in the budget. So that being said, we looked at previous projects that were awarded, um, and we looked at what our needs were for something that could not, the city just does not have the funding available to replace. Um, we tried to get a grant a couple of years ago to replace some of these culverts. They're all over a hundred years old, they're all in, in definitely need of replacement. Um, so we picked the worst, the one by the sewer treatment plant, which is original. If that one fails, you know, we would be without direct access to the sewer treatment plant. Um, so we're, we're, that one is included, and then one of the other worst ones, kind of the next, one of the next in line is the Hillsdale Street. Um, we did a study on all, all of these culverts, and those are two of our worst and two of our most critical. So, given this was, you know, for a federal earmark, is kind of a wish and a prayer, um, we picked the two worst and, uh, pulled numbers together, um, for them, and what this does is just say the council supports that request.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions for Dave?
So it's like a Christmas wish list, basically?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so moved, four-two.
Support.
Ca- Councilman Beer?
The Gallaloway Drive, where's that located? Is that on the-
The poop plant.
That's right before this sewer treatment plant.
I got you, okay, then the Hillsdale Street one?
Is the one right here by Handmade.
Okay, yep.
It's actually in very bad shape.
Okay. Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Sharp, to, uh, adopt the following resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Roll call vote.
Councilperson Wolfram?
Yes.
Bear Socker?
No.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Soha?
No.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Seven-one approved.
Thank you, Katie.
Resolution three-five-four-four.
Three-five-four-four. Thank you, Katie. Pork barrel earmarks, guys, sorry. Why's your head? All right, we'll move on to-
If I made me comment?
Sure.
So, uh, you actu- we actually got this request from both the, the Senate side and the House side. Um, so we did submit one also. We didn't need, uh, this type of letter of support because we already had it, but it was for Arch Street in the industrial park that we've been trying to get resurfaced for the businesses, businesses out there. So from the congressional side, we submitted that project, um, to see if we'd get anywhere, so.
Good deal. You're doing a good job, Dave. I'll sign the resolution. Councils, smart people, I'm meeting on here, so. All right, uh, new business, item letter F, police vehicle purchase. Chief?
Good evening, uh, we have a chance to go first. I'm gonna start with answering some of the questions you asked, and first is, there is no avenue to go out to bid local or otherwise for a police package vehicle right now. Probably not till later this summer. Um, with that, last year, um, with Chevrolets, police package vehicles, the ordering window was twenty-four hours. You've heard that before, a couple of times I've heard it. You have meetings from the BPU, the DPS for certain trucks. There was a twenty-four hour window to get your order in, and then you're six, six months to a year off from getting it. At least that's what you want. No avenue later this year for a Durango police package. I spoke with Blackman Township, who uses Durangos, and they're still waiting on four twenty-twenty-two models that they ordered in twenty-one. Um, when that window was open, they shut it after four hours. So we're working, the whole commercial fleet vehicle market has completely changed. Yeah, I've been here long enough, I know change is very difficult, and it's, sometimes we don't see it coming, but, um, all of our departments that have fleets right now have been dealing with, each department has come up and spoken to you, um, about this. And the budget amount, going back to twenty-nineteen, we budgeted thirty-five thousand dollars per vehicle. That was purchase vehicle and have it fully outfitted, ready for the road as a patrol vehicle. In twenty, for the twenty-twenty models, we had to increase that ten thousand dollars, um, to forty-five thousand to do the exact same thing. With the numbers I've got for Fords, right now, we would have to increase that a minimum of another twelve thousand dollars. Get it up to that fifty-eight, fifty-nine thousand dollars for one vehicle. Um, the reason why we never went with a Chevy Tahoe is because of the price point was tipped Ford Explorer Chevy Tahoe. That has reversed right now for this year for some reason significantly, um, around almost six thousand dollars, just to purchase a vehicle lower for a Chevy Tahoe. So, because of the budget amount, we did, we did not put in for a vehicle in a twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Um, two vehicles ago, we had to wait a year to get a car outfitted that we had purchased. That was just because of the supply chain at the time. So, we felt we were sitting good enough for that budget year. Uh, we did put in for one for our coming budget year, but because of the pricing, uh, the decision was made that it would be paid for out of the Fire Department and Public Safety Equipment Vehicle and Building Milage Fund, um, which is appropriate, but with that fund, I spoke to several service groups, several organizations, went several meetings, talked publicly numerous times about that. And I will say for me personally, I told them we would be good stewards of their money, which is additional money that they agreed to give to us for these purposes above and beyond the property tax money. We still try, even on what we knew we were going to have to expend over a ten-year period of time, that mileage was still gonna be about a two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar shortfall from what we believe we were gonna have to expend. We have done very well. We've gotten grants for some of the stuff we thought we were gonna have to expend that money on. Other things, we didn't have to expend as much as we originally were told because we went with other avenues, had, uh, people come and check our equipment out, kind of things like that. And like recently, the Public Safety Committee approved the purchase of a mini pumper at about half the cost of a full-size engine that we had on that expenditure sheet. So, all these things at the Public Safety Committee, and we have done at the Fire Department, Police Department with this, um, uh, we can proudly say we've been good stewards of the public's mileage money that they approved to give us. Um, since we're using that money, um, and there are no windows currently available to go out for bid, nor is there any paperwork for state purchasing contracts on these vehicles, so we could put one together and see what our cost was gonna be. Um, I spoke to smaller chiefs, we had a Hillsdale County Police Chiefs meeting, uh, two weeks ago, and one of the police chiefs there told me about this price point jump and that their department was, uh, in the process of purchasing a Chevy Tahoe. I reached out, I got information, I spoke to our local vendors that we normally purchase from, confirmed again this morning. Um, there's nothing out for bid right now that our price is probably still gonna be, that twelve, thirteen thousand more than we paid for our last vehicle twelve months ago that we got from them. And, uh, Berger Chevrolet in Grand Rapids holds a state purchasing contract on Chevy Tahos. And in that twenty-four hour window, where they placed all their orders last year, they placed orders for a bunch of extra patrol package, police package Tahos, to have on the lot to sell to agencies. And this is what a couple of the bigger dealerships do in Michigan. They currently have one on their lot, that meets our needs. Um, their quote price is forty thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars for that vehicle sitting on the lot today. They know we're at this meeting tonight, and, uh, the best estimate cost I could get on a Ford Explorer, if there was one available right now, would be roughly five thousand more than that, a minimum of forty-five thousand dollars. Two just came in for another department in Hillsdale County, and they were forty-eight thousand dollars apiece. So that's a significant amount of money. Um, I reached out to our outfitter to see what the cost would be on outfitting the Tahoe compared to, because they had just given me a quote for an Explorer earlier this month. He said, we just got done building two. Let me pull the paper, probably went back, he compared the two. Uh, for multiple reasons, he said it could be about two thousand less than building the Explorer. Uh, one thing, the Tahoe comes with wiring harnesses in place in different parts of the vehicle, so they don't have to tear the whole vehicle part, build wire harnesses in it. Um, obviously, we do not have any Chevy Tahos, we do not have any equipment to move forward to that. Um, so that would have to be purchased, but I backed off some of the other equipment, like, uh, not putting a light bar on it or having a rear bio seat in it. We can go with lights other, around it, other than a light bar on top, and, uh, we were able to get actually less in outfitting a Ford Explorer. So, for these reasons, the fact that we're expending mileage funds from our community, um, and there is no avenue for going out to bid anywhere for a police package vehicle. Uh, nobody can say what the costs are going to be, how long it will take after your, if you even get your order in, in whatever that narrow lingo is. I respectfully request approval to purchase a twenty-twenty-three Chevrolet Tahoe at the cost of forty thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars um, from Berger Chevrolet in Grand Rapids.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the Chief? Councilman Sharp?
That's six thousand four hundred and forty-one dollar difference. That is huge between the X, the Ford and the Chevy. So you did do your homework on that.
I did a little more homework, even, um, checked, uh, the miles per gallon ratings between the two vehicles. Some say one mile, some say two miles to the gallon difference between the Tahoe and Explorer. Going with a two miles difference, um, going back for the last twelve months of mileage put on the supervisor's vehicle, at worst-case scenario, this could cost us five hundred dollars more a year of fuel. That's worse, that's if it's two, is two miles different at, per gallon, and if they drive the same amount of miles, which would take ten years and we'd still be to the good side over a thousand dollars.
Councilman Wolfram?
Just to, so I can understand this, it, it looks like you could buy the truck from a local dealer. The, the, this was the, uh, DPS truck deal, right? So that, that was gonna be from a local dealer. Why can't we-
It's a police package vehicle.
This, so-
Special larger vehicle.
Okay, so police package vehicles, do you have to go through this, uh, government fleet sales?
Yeah, that's where we get our base price. Anytime we've gone out for bid, um, all of our local, only a big agency like Berger or, uh, Signature Ford in Wasso, who holds state purchasing contracts and sell the vehicles, which is my deal price, state purchasing contract price, all other bids come in over that. Local ones or otherwise. They all come, come in above. The only ones that come in at the lowest price at that my deal or state purchasing contract price are those big dealerships. Um, so, so we have paid more than that almost every single time. Uh, but while we have run in because of the fleet market, especially with police vehicles, is, the last one we bought, we only got one bid. That was from a local vendor, and it was well above the three percent, and we had to pay it. We only had one bid to get the vehicle. The time before that, we went out to bid, we got zero bids. So this is the other thing we have, which is, I consider a risk to waiting when we have one, we can get now for a lower price, is-
Thank you, Chief. Any more questions for the Chief? Councilman Soha?
Could you remind us, Chief, how often we recycle or purchase a new police vehicle?
We have a rotation schedule, um, keeping the patrol vehicles on a four-year rotation, but I have been able to improve upon that. Instead of having two unmarked vehicles, one for the detective and one for the chief, which is what you used to do here, I eliminated the second, um, unmarked vehicle and took that out of rotation. And what I do is take the oldest vehicle coming out of the patrol fleet that no longer should be, probably doesn't have a, a pursuit rating anymore because of the mileage and age and maintenance that's been done on it. And then I drive there for a year, sometimes up to two years. The car I'm driving right now is a seventeen that we pulled out of the fleet, so to get rid of that, that's what I use for my vehicle, why I'm able. So we've been able to extend the life of our vehicles by me doing that, stretching them out. But generally, we're on a four-year, and I, I think they've all been over four years recently when we've been, um, retiring them. And none of them have fully retired, which I told you before. Everyone we've ever, uh, purchased since two thousand fourteen, the SUV, all-wheel-drives, are still in service with the city, Hillsdale. Every single one of them.
That's pretty impressive. I mean, you got, you know, police cars, twenty-four hours on, sometimes on the road, basically, so it's not like a, a car that you got home that-
When I first started, they were trashed after about seventy thousand miles.
They're Dodge Chargers, too.
It's nothing for us. At least the car I drive, at least one other than the fleet, they have between a hundred and five to a hundred and twenty thousand miles on it.
Go ahead, the follow-up, Chief. Um, so, just again, to follow up to Councilman Wolfram's, the, the last times that we've put this to bid, we've kind of taken it in the shorts as a city. Because we either only had one or zero bids, and so, I might understand that these bigger entities that have the my-deal pricing or whatever, uh, they, they don't choose to bid in those type of processes?
Reached out to them when we did not get the bids, and they all told me the same thing, you guys, that you never buy from us. You only ask me for one vehicle on a bid. Bigger departments might ask for four vehicles at a time on a bid. We only ask for one, only once a year, and we never buy from them. They said, we are too busy, we are, it pretty much said, we're not gonna waste our time with the city vehicles built for police cars, is what they told me. We don't buy from them. Every time somebody comes in close to that three percent or over, because we got no other bids, we go with that. I, I can't blame them, but I thank them for the time God offered them. It's just, it's just what the market we're in right now, and they're correct. I mean, anybody that's a business person would probably have the same response. You never buy from me, I'm not wasting my time anymore.
I, I can, I can vouch for that in my business. I get requests for bids all the time, and I used to put them all out, and I never get the job, I said, I'm not bidding anymore. I mean, it takes too much time to put the bid together, if I'm taking the business and I'm not just bidding.
Sure. Makes sense.
And I'm not trying to avoid it, there's just no way to put this out for bid right now.
Any more questions, discussion? Intervening motion to, uh, to purchase a vehicle for forty thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars, twenty-twenty-three Chevrolet Tahoe, four-wheel-drive police package from Berger Chevrolet?
So moved.
Second.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Morrissey. Can I have a roll call, City Clerk?
Councilmember Wolfram?
Yes.
Bear Socker?
Yes.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
And Beer?
Yes.
Eight-zero approved.
Thank you, Katie. All right, we will move into miscellaneous reports. We've only got, uh, appointments tonight. Uh, light, letter B for the elect, the Election Commission, uh, City Clerk Price has told me that this is a time-sensitive appointments that need to happen. Melissa Deschardon and Penny Swan to the Election Commission. Any questions regarding these, Councilman?
Just, what, what does the Election Commission do? What's their responsibility?
Katie?
So they appoint the inspectors, and then they, um, they do the public accuracy testing, the tamperers, some machines, they actually do test tests through that.
The commission does? They test the equipment?
Yes, yes.
How, how do they get certified to do that? I mean, how are they certified? Do they get training to do that, so they know what they're checking for?
They do. I mean, I kind of show them how to, I mean, it's not state-certified or anything, but it's, we have, we have a key that, you know, it pulls out a tape that shows us-
So you gotta check what's there?
Yes, correct. Yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Intervening motion to approve the two appointments?
So moved.
Second.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Beer, seconded by Councilman Morrissey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Melissa and Penny, and we will move into general public comment. During this time, podium will be open. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please limit your trips to one to the podium, and during this public comment period, you may speak on anything your heart so desires. Podium is now open. And during this public comment period, you may speak on anything your heart so desires. Podium is now open. Seeing no public comment, we'll close the podium. Move into the city manager's report. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor. I will keep this, uh, brief. Um, didn't want to respond to la, at the last meeting. Councilman Soha had asked about a two hundred thousand dollar expen, uh, um, expenditure. Um, that was part of our capital improvement plan in, in, uh, the BPU. And went back and looked that up. That was for what we call a SCADA system. So the SCADA system basically ties all our, our, um, um, different BPU systems together so it can be monitored, like our water wells, our sewer treatment plant operation, our electric engines. So it's all tied into the SCADA system so we can monitor their operations. And so that's something we haven't replaced in many years. So that was, uh, uh, estimated to be around two hundred thousand. That's what, uh, that item was that we couldn't answer at the last meeting. Um, also, just to let everyone know, at the, the first April meeting, we'll be presenting the budget. Uh, to start looking at, um, actually, I'm very pleasantly, uh, pleased with it. Um, so I think you guys will as well because it, it addresses a number of our goals as a council. It addresses, uh, school resource officer with the school. Uh, it addresses more, uh, monies for co enforcement and potentially demolitions. Um, so it addresses a number of those things that council has felt very strongly about. So I was pretty, pretty pleased with it. So that will be at the first meeting in April. That we will, um, present that to you and then, um, we'll identify some of the highlights for discussion. Um, lastly, just want, uh, many of you have probably seen this last week. We were at, got, as a city, we're at Guyer Elementary School during, basically all week, doing a reading to the classrooms. Um, basically, uh, from the BPU, Ginger, uh, Police and Fire, um, many, um, city employees. And then we capped out off, um, with, on Friday with a touch truck event. So we had a, a police, uh, vehicle, uh, the fire truck. We had numerous BPU vehicles, um, a bucket truck. And the, the kids from the entire school got to go through all those vehicles. And if you were there, you get kind of deafened because of the honking of all the horns. Uh, and the air horns and all that good stuff. But, uh, it was a tremendous event. Um, we had little gifts and stuff for them, like, you know, fire hats and tokens from the BPU and such. So it's a great event. We got to read to all the classes and then they got to go out and see our equipment and, uh, they just loved it. So with that, Mayor, that is all I have to report on.
That's awesome stuff, Dave. It's, uh, it's my turn tomorrow to read to the kids at Guyer. So I'll be there tomorrow at, at one. And then, of course, I don't know how many of you guys get a chance to participate in, uh, reading as fun activities, but usually, uh, we've got Community Action Agency, the preschool, uh, on Wednesday and Guyer tomorrow. So should be fun. Look forward to it every year. Uh, have no doubt the budget's going to be sound, always is. So any other questions for Dave? Councilman Sharp?
Yes, would you please explain if the library was closed, the, how we fund it and whether other communities fund it too? How that works out, the one mil, the amount and go from there?
So the library has its own statutory limitation and Tom can correct me if I'm wrong on this. So we have a twenty mil limit for a city of our size. Their one mil that they receive is above that. So if, for whatever reason, um, that one mil is not utilized, whether the library is not there or whatnot, we don't get to capture that one mil for something else. It is strictly for library purpose. So that being said, we are, we're close to our twenty mil limit. Um, just, just shy of it with, with our approvals, uh, for various things with the villages and everything. But the library, uh, is its own one mil and that totals about a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Tom, is that, there arounds correct?
Uh, one of the commu, uh, townships are also involved in the community library. Is it like Jefferson?
I believe there are two at this point. There used to be a, a third, I believe.
Cambria used to be part of it, but they, they pulled it out.
Yeah.
Those Jefferson units don't tell you?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I believe it's been some, there had been a lack of communication with the library previously with some of, some of them. Um, so I know that's something that the board has spoke about last year. Um, was reaching out to those townships again to see if they could re, reinitiate those relationships, the ones that have left. I think one has. I don't, and I think there are two that are actually still, um, providing for their resilience.
Thank you.
That's right. It's, uh, it's Jefferson and Hillsdale that we still have a relationship with. And there used to be Cambria as well. And Cambria township board decided, uh, for whatever reason, uh, they didn't want to be in a partnership with us anymore. So.
So it is something that we could go out and present to the board and, and I know that they have talked, that the library board has talked about trying to, again, retain those relationships.
Council comment or a question for Dave?
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mackey, uh, can you speak to the city cleanup efforts? I noticed, uh, teams out in Mrs. Stocks Park this morning, uh, with the trees that were down. And maybe when, uh, when they might get, if the schedule's still on to get to the street cleanup.
I'm going to ask Jason to come up as he is, uh, and he can report on the timing. Um, I think the original timing was that first week in April is when they're going to start on the street.
Correct. April third is when we're still projected to be on the street. Excuse me. So, um, we're supposed to be done with Stocks Park probably tomorrow. Um, still working on hanging limbs on the city streets. Um, Lakeview and all the other parks been completed as of last week. Um, we have overgrowth left to do. Um, so we still should be on staff, or on staff, should be on track to hit that goal of April third. I don't see why we shouldn't.
Thank you, Cruz, for me, please.
Absolutely. They will appreciate that.
We have been pushing that out on social media and, and, uh, to make sure people understand, uh, that process, when that process is starting.
Absolutely.
Any more questions for Dave? Councilman? Want to apologize to you guys for not being at the last meeting. I was sick, had a fever. So, um, it was not some, uh, attempt to skirt my responsibilities as mayor, as maybe has been suggested. Uh, I will let you guys know, I wish I would have been here so I could explain to you how the library appointment process happened. Um, I did receive an application after the election from Pat Flannery, after he was elected to the school board, asking to be appointed to the library board. And I told Pat, I thought that would be great. Um, probably two days after that, I received an application from, uh, Dan, the second guy that applied. And I told Dan, I said, well, Dan, I already have a, uh, an application in front of me. And I think you guys are both probably good candidates. So I, I'm not sure, uh, how I would go about appointing other than first come, first served, which Pat gave me the application first. That's really the only way I know how to handle it, um, fairly. It's probably about a week after that, I got an email from the superintendent that said, just to let you know, that's not how the school board does the appointment process to the library board. Um, they have their own way of choosing a candidate. And I said, I'm sorry, Sean, I was not aware of that. Um, the city charter does not speak to process. It just says that a member has to be a school board member. Um, but I can tell you that things have been pretty controversial at the library and I would like that not to continue. So I hope that the school board is very prudent with their appointment. Um, and I would like it to be a collaborative process, cooperative process, as in I would like to be a part of the process if we're going to add somebody else to the library board. Uh, I never heard anything back from the school board. And next thing I know, I got an email, a couple of emails actually, um, which Mr. Jansen has voided them. So I'm sure they'll be out publicly soon, um, from some concerned residents that says, by the way, the school board is appointing this gentleman to the library board. We don't think he'd be a good representative to the community. So I got back ahold of Sean Bondra and I said, Sean, I uh, don't know what happened. I never heard two from a school board member, um, but I hear that they've put forth, uh, Dan LaRue as a, as an appointment to the library board. And I'm already getting emails of concern from residents about it. So I'm disappointed that there wasn't a collaborative process. Um, I held on to the appointment for a couple of months. I did that on purpose. I didn't talk to anybody about that, but I was hoping, I was nervous because I thought that probably there would be some controversy regarding the appointment after a couple of months. Um, I guess I just felt like I didn't have a really good reason to hold on to the appointment anymore. So I brought the appointment forward and sure enough, as soon as it was on the agenda, I started getting emails um, about not appointing Dan to the library board. After a couple of days, I started to get emails in support of him as well. Uh, I'm sure we've all got the emails. I can promise you, I've gotten a lot more of them, uh, however many you guys have got. So, you know, whatever happened at the last meeting happened. I will say, you know, uh, I understand the apprehensions that, uh, Mr. LaRue was the chair of the Democratic Party. I don't know if that should matter so much or not. Uh, this community is about seventy-five percent Republican. And let's be frank, this is the swing seat on the library board. I've tried to be, um, I've tried to appoint a diverse, um, cast of characters onto committees because I thought that was fair to have a representation of all sorts of people that live in the community. Um, but that representation should be also a representation of what this community is, which is about seventy-five percent conservative way of thinking. So I think we've done a pretty good job at appointing people with different varying beliefs to boards. Uh, but I knew that this one was going to be controversial because uh, exactly the point that there's two conservative people on and there's two liberal people on the library board. And this would be sort of a swing vote. So, um, I'm sure some people don't think that it should matter, somebody's politics, uh, but, uh, a lot of those same people that are telling me that it shouldn't matter that he was chair of the Democratic Party or exact same people who wouldn't go to a parade because it was being put, being put on by the Balkans. So, um, you know, what happened, happened. Uh, Councilman Peladino did contact me about changing the, uh, ordinance. And I told him that was definitely something we could look into. And had I been at the, the meeting last Monday, knowing, having my gut feeling on how the appointment process was going to go, I would have just pulled the damn appointment off the table and said, we're looking at this and we'll move forward with it in the future rather than putting the whole community through another controversy. I don't think I could stop the controversy. But I will say, I think it was irresponsible for Josh to say those things at the meeting about closing the library. Um, I have talked to him about it. He tells me that he, he has told me, and I wish he would say this publicly, that it was all theoretical stuff, that he was saying, this, these are things we could do, not that he was advocating that these are things that we should do. Um, but I have gotten some emails about people concerned that we're closing the library or tearing the building down. I myself have said some careless stuff in the past. I learned my lesson. Just spitballing ideas about moving it back to the Mitchell Building and the outcry that it caused. So, you know, our words carry a lot of weight and sometimes I forget that and I open my big mouth. But hopefully, here we are again and the community's all wound up roar and I'm sorry that it happened. I, I strongly, very firmly believe that had the school board worked with me cooperatively on the appointment process, that it could have been avoided, but it didn't, it didn't work out that well. And I like all the members of the school board. I know most of them per, personally, and they're good people. So I just wanted to say that while everybody's sitting up here at the table, sorry I wasn't at the last meeting. It wasn't to drop something into your guys' lap and have, have you have to answer for something. So. Any more council comment? Councilman Morris?
Well, Mayor, I chaired that meeting and he had no problems whatsoever. I enjoyed it. As long as I have to gavel, I'm happy to do a long meeting.
I've never had any doubt that you are a, a, a stupendous mayor representative and have complete capability of handling these meetings, Councilman Morrissey, without a doubt.
And the other thing is, I, I, I sometimes go over to the library and read in it. It's a beautiful space. I like the library. I don't think it should be demolished, moved, or disturbed in any way.
No, nobody's closing the library. That's just I'm saying that right now, okay?
I just also want to mention that the library did provide people a place to go when they were without power. People actually went in there to warm up. So it's a community service thing too.
Mm-hmm.
And that'd be ripping the heart out of the community if you closed that library, even thought about closing it. It's community library.
Yeah.
It is the community. It's not something on the hill or anything else. It's the community. Community is coastal county.
It is. It's the city library.
City library, but the whole county does use it. There's people who do show up, use the library. We need to continue to support that either way. Thank you.
Well, like I said, I wish Josh would just address it himself and say, no, I don't want to close the library. I wish he would just come out and say that. Uh, since I know by talk, from having talking to him, that is not his intention. It's not something he wants to do. So, um, just so we can stop with the knee jerk emotional reactions to things, I hope.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Soha. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's get into adjourn.